All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and I am going to call to order a workshop session of the New Market School Board. And we'll begin this session as we do all meetings by saying we pledge allegiance, so please join me with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our time tonight in this workshop is to, and I'll read the policy that generated this idea. It's policy BAA, evaluation of the board. At the conclusion of each year, the board shall reflect on the degree to which its goals and objectives have been accomplished by conducting a board self-evaluation. The board's self-evaluation shall address performance in the key functions of school boards, vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. The results of the self-evaluation shall be used in setting goals for the subsequent year, including board development activities where needed. So what I thought we could do is sort of go through our individual evaluations to see where some of our areas of strength and weakness lay as individuals and then develop goals for the board as a whole from that. You know, I think when I was doing this myself, I tried to be as honest with myself as possible and reflective on my areas, in particular, of weakness.
Can we do a roundtable thing? Because we're kind of like talking down the aisle.
I don't know how that's going to work camera-wise, but sure.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does. Maybe U shape. U shape, maybe.
Is this better, Mike? I think so.
Let me just shorten the U.
Sorry.
So, as I was saying, I think that it's important that we look at this individually honestly in terms of evaluating ourselves and then collectively come up with some ideas for all of us in terms of areas where we're strength, because there are several of those areas, I feel, for us as a team, and some areas where we might have some challenge. So if we look at the evaluation form of the operational procedures form and this...
Can you slow down just a second?
And he sent it out two or three weeks ago, I think.
Yeah, I know, and I went through it.
We'll let you get it, Al, so you can have your stuff in front of you. There's no rush, we have time.
Oh, go, 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 go.
All right, so the first section, section A is relationship with the superintendent. And I think we should go, if no one is in opposition to it, through all of these, to look at each one individually. We have enough time to do that. I think that it would be beneficial to do that in all sections of this evaluation. So the first section under relationship with the superintendent is establishes written policies for the guidance of the superintendent in the operation of the schools. I will say, for myself, I rated that as a one, because I think that's a challenging area that we have. But that was just my view on it.
I rated it a little higher, I gave it a three, in that I was a little bit, I didn't know how much of that was the policies that are in place, that we use those, and that we didn't have to, that those were in place, we didn't have to develop them. But if we were, if there were things that we were supposed to develop, I would agree with you that they were a one, we didn't.
I put it down as a four, because I interpreted it as the existing policies that are out there. Obviously, we got some work to do over time to update those, but...
So I would say, Al, Elizabeth, do you guys have any input on that one?
I had a four as well. So I thought it was just based on policies for existing.
So we'll say a four. Does that feel good for everyone, three, four?
I had, I rated it three, but that was because I was like, hmm, if we had to write something we didn't, if we have, if it's really working on those existing ones.
I'll say three. Does that seem fair?
I cannot find mine. I recall the comments.
Do you want me to, I have a copy made of this one.
I'll share.
All right. Look on.
I remember my comments.
Perfect. The next one, provides the superintendent with a clear statement of expectations, performance, and personal qualities against which he/she will be measured periodically. I didn't think we did that. I gave it a one.
I gave it a three.
I gave it a three to four for a couple of things. We didn't, we didn't set goals at the beginning of this year, but we did, I think that the evaluation form that you used last year, we use again this year, is, is pretty comprehensive, but clearly, goals are needed. Three?
Four. I said a one again.
I said a one as well. And then I thought, yeah, that evaluation form reflects backwards instead of forwards. It might give us some ideas of what we need to do, but to bring it in at the evaluation end instead of the going-forward end, I thought we were not clear about that.
I gave it a two, and what I focused on were goals. And they should be, in my opinion, things that we could all resite pretty easily, and I can't, I'm having a difficult time doing that.
So I hear two ones, a two, three. Mike, do you have a three, four?
Three's fine. Three, three's fine, or lower, whatever.
Maybe two points on that one. All right, the next one, encourages confidence in the superintendent by vital communication from the superintendent.
I gave it a four. At least from my sense, the board's very open, very talkative, very demonstrable about soliciting communication.
I gave it a four as well. I got a five.
I gave it a three. Just because, and maybe it's, I just probably haven't asked often enough.
So can we call that a four? Reaches decisions only on the basis of study of all available background data and consideration of the recommendation of the superintendent.
I gave it a three. I think we operate on the recommendation of the superintendent in most cases. Unfortunately, I don't know that, I feel like I've looked at a lot of it, and it may just be because, as an educator, I know there's a lot of data that's behind things, and sometimes I'm like, hmm, I'd like to look at that, I haven't seen it. And, you know, it's, it's not the sort of thing that I would ask for on the spot in a meeting.
Right.
But you can't.
I know, but they're not going to, but it's not going to be immediately available. The data's not going to be immediately, I can ask for it.
Right.
Right. No, no. If I haven't thought, if we're discussing it at the meeting, it's not the time for me to be asking for it. I should be asking for it in advance if I thought about it. And sometimes it's a matter of comes up in discussion, I go, oops, I wish I'd asked for that, that data, because I know there is, as an educator, I know there's data back to that thing.
I put a four to five, Kim. I don't, you know, I consider all data that's given, I don't know what I don't know.
Right.
And I don't recall a time, other than perhaps with a kindergarten parent, that we didn't just outright approve a recommendation. I might be, my memory might not be perfect on that, but...
I mean, I think there've been times when addition, like Elizabeth said, we've been in discussion of something, additional information has been requested and has been provided. I put a four on that one. Basically, what was been said, my knowledge is limited. My knowledge on knowing what to ask sometimes is more limited than my knowledge of the situation. But I think that when we receive a recommendation from our superintendent, we proceed with it for the most part.
I'd give it a four or five. Take a five to me in terms of education, because I have so little experience, and I, I feel as though that's one of the superintendent's greatest strengths, is understanding education, how it's delivered. So I personally would give it a strong four, I guess.
Okay. Next one, request information from, through the superintendent and only from staff members with the knowledge of the superintendent.
I get that as a five.
I would say my behavior for the past year has been five. I don't go anywhere.
Correct.
I, I'm even reluctant to consider going someplace else for information, which I'm not sure is great, but that's...
And I put a three, mostly because I feel like I'm in the learning curve where I've blurted out a question, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute, I should have asked, I should have asked Meredith to get that for me.
Any other feedback on that one? I put a five for that for myself as well.
I think that we were all made quite aware that we shouldn't call anybody else but Meredith. But I will put in a question to Cheryl or to Penny that I know goes to Meredith.
I know that we're not, like, I asked a question yesterday of Lisa, and so in that case, I addressed it to both. So they were both clear on what was being asked, and a response was given pretty expeditiously. So I think that's what, just, just to make sure that I'm not gumming up the works, you know, if someone has a major project that they're working on that I'm unaware of, and I come with a request, it might gum things up.
When I do it in writing, I try to do that, and with flexibility in my schedule, I try to make a point and come in and ask Meredith. And I generally try to say, this is why I'm asking for it, so I don't put anybody on the defensive side.
Right.
So that they don't upfront why I ask, and what my gap is, so that they understand more fully what the kind of information is I need.
The next one is provides a climate of mutual respect and trust, offering commendation whenever earned and constructive criticism when necessary.
I gave myself a four. I mean, I think for the most part, commendation is there. There were a couple of occasions, to be honest, where a night's sleep on my behalf was in order versus heat. So, yep.
I think that makes sense.
I gave myself a high three. A good example of that at the last meeting, I slipped with Lisa about asking some questions. And I was overly, overly persistent and frustrated that I wasn't getting an answer, and I need to, as a matter of fact, I, we had, I went up, signed the manifest, and we talked about it. So I need to work on that.
But then it's part of, you keep learning, you keep admitting what you're learning.
I smoothed down that.
So I truly appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, when I talk about the strength that we have, there are times that all of us stumble, but it's, how do I learn from that stumble? How do I make it better for the next time? And I think Elizabeth, you had a great point with Al. I mean, Al, you acknowledged a couple of times where maybe you weren't going on the path that maybe you should have, and then you have thought to correct that. I think that's a valuable part for a team member.
That's what happens when you get old. You're not trying, you're not trying to impress anybody.
So I would say on that one, maybe a four, because...
All of us have the same take on that.
No, but I think all of us have to do that, regardless of age, because I think, you know, when you get past forty, you kind of stop, if you ever cared, because I've never been in the cool clique. I know you guys are surprised about that, but...
Wait till you get past seventy.
Hopefully, I do, Al, hopefully I do. All right. Matters tending to alienate either board members or superintendent are discussed immediately rather than being permitted to fester and deteriorate. This was a tough one for me.
Yep.
And I rated myself low, because, I gave myself a one, actually.
I did too.
Because I tend to want to be a peacemaker on things, and I need to stop that. But that's just a personal flaw I'm learning from too, Al. So I gave myself a one on low. I'm not usually a reactionary person in the moment. I usually have to take time and process stuff and bring it up later.
I, I had a one in there, too.
For me, it's just, I have learned in the six years I've been here, that in watching for the last ten years, that sometimes you just have to wait and let everybody catch up. But in the meantime, I'm festering, and it's hard, but I, I don't think I alienate anybody. I think this is a good year, so I wouldn't, I don't want to put myself at a one, because I really think that at the end, we all try to talk about it and talk it out, and make sure it's not a personal thing, and so I gave myself a three.
Three to four on this one for me, I, on a couple of levels. I just remember one time, not too long ago, Kim, where I was probably a little impatient during a meeting, and you were reading through a list, and I just kind of tritely said, can we, everybody's got the list, and I didn't mean to insult you, but I was just probably tired and trying to move things along.
It was a stressful meeting.
So you, you raised it, I very much appreciated it, because sometimes I'm not sensitive to that. So that's definitely a good thing. I was glad that you did raise it.
Thank you. I am, too.
And, you know, some other things, during the year, you know, with Meredith or whatever, there are things that, that I was concerned with. Sometimes I would, I would, I would let them ride, thinking, this, no. No, it's, expecting perfection is, is a bad expectation, and, and just not making a big deal about it. But it brings me to a broader point, that I think as, as a board and as amongst ourselves and with the superintendent, we need a, we need a pressure valve of some mechanism, of some sort of process, you know, whereby we raise things in a, in a constructive manner that might be bothering us.
Right. I felt like going through this, that this tool was a good reminder that we need to do that kind of thing, and on, or how better to function, this was really a good reminder. And that's, that's one of those that I felt was a reminder of how to behave as a board member and as a board as a whole.
I mean, I think another good thing, you know, that we have, is that we have the ability to interact with each other in a way where people can express their pressure, like, release their valve quickly, and then we can say, okay, here's the, the valve has been released, let's address it, let's look at this in a logical fashion and break this down, and, and we might even release the pressures more slowly in the future, or eliminate the situation depending on what it is. But I think that's a good thing that we can do as a group and within individual parts of us, because I think there are, some people are skilled in sort of calming folks down sometimes, which I think we all need from time to time.
Yeah.
I wrote it down. Which is it, Mike? I just put pressure valve release.
Pressure valve, that'll prompt our memory.
Okay. So I would say on this, three and a half, because we've got, Al, did you have any input on that one?
Talking about the private sector environment, this is various, I found this to be very civil. I mean, uncomfortably so for me sometimes.
Right.
But it's just, you just have to, you know, in the private sector, the red meat goes on the table, and you go after it. It's, it's just not this environment. I think we do great.
And I think...
I've never been on a board where I could honestly look everybody in the face and say, I really like Wharton.
No, I think we, we have the benefit of, of some boards past that used to sit in these seats that didn't have this type, and some of us are still sitting here alive from the times, that saw things were not working. And I think many of us decided to be, participate in this to help bring that to an end. So I think in that regard, that is one of the strengths that we have as a team.
Relatively to that, I would give us a six, from where it was.
Three years ago, you know? So it was, it was awkward just to watch.
It was. There were moments that it was like...
It was painful.
There's a citizen who said that she misses the day that she could just put up her glass of wine and...
Yeah, it was, it was like reality TV.
No, but I mean, I think, I think for us, working together in this team and having the continuity again, is that we have been able to get some things in terms of our working together that have been successful, and built upon, and built the trust in a way that maybe what didn't exist in the past. So I'm grateful for that. Provides opportunity and encouragement for professional growth of the superintendent.
I put a three on that one and the next one, because I think Meredith's had so much on her plate for the last two years. I don't know how she finds time for those kinds of things, that as a teacher, I found were the things, it's like, okay, I'll read that professional journal fifteen minutes before I go to sleep tonight, and I'll go, hmm. And I'm not sure that we've provided that time.
I mean, I think...
I think we have.
I think that's a great question. That's a hard answer.
Right, exactly.
Do you feel like we've given you that time? I feel like that's a priority for me, so I make that time.
That's, that's my reaction is, I mean, I don't, I don't participate in allocating, and it's a question of, is the demand so high that you can't manage both? And the answer is, it probably is, but it's up to you to manage.
You know, and I think I have the benefit of seeing requests for different things she's going to speak at, things she's participating in, that it's happening. I mean, and, and she's doing some amazing stuff on the national stage. You know, I don't even know the details of it enough, but there's stuff going on. But I think, so I think that's happening. So we'll say a five for that. Provides time for the superintendent to plan.
I don't really know how to answer that one, because we're not regulating schedules.
Yeah, and I don't think we would want to get involved in that. I think that, that's ev, our, well, I was going to say we've, there's evidence that we do it, but I think that, you know, planning for things, just like planning for the development, professional development's the same thing that we would require her to do, and we can see it at different stages of the process, I would think. All right, the last one of that section, takes the initiative in maintaining a professional salary for the superintendent comparable with salaries paid for similar responsibility in and out of the profession.
I give us a five on that one. I think we did a fair amount of looking last year, and I think we're relatively competitive.
I agree.
Okay. The next one is community, community relations. And this, some of these were sort of interesting, because it was sort of a mixed bag, we'll go through them. Encourages attendance of citizens at board meetings. I think, my feeling is that we do. That we, you know, when people have asked for items to be put on the agenda, they've been put on, citizens, that is. And I think, especially when there's an item that's going to be of major importance, we do encourage people from a variety, by a variety of different means to attend and have their voices heard. You know, I'm sure we can always have more, but I think we do that.
I, I put four to five, and I, and I took it out more broadly than just board meetings, you know, for these multiple forums we've had, you know, Butter's forums or all of that.
That's what I was thinking.
And I think that, I can recall numerous times when all of us really have said during meetings that, you know, please come out, we want your, like, on the SRO thing, I think on the competency base, you know, we encourage folks to come, and a lot, a lot of stuff. So, but, but a question remains to me on a, on a broader communication plan, whether, you know, the two people or three people watching our meetings, we're really reaching them, you know? And that's a question maybe for another day. Maybe we need a more affirmative outreach.
I mean, I think, I think that is definitely a, an area for a goal for us as a board, as we had on last year's goals for ourselves, and a goal for Meredith, I would think, in terms of communication, Mike. Because I think that, you know, we know from evidence, the more people hear things, or the more opportunities people have to hear things, the more they're going to hear them. Is everyone going to hear everything? No. But the more opportunities we give them to hear stuff, the greater likelihood more people will.
And the more people do, the more we seed that conversation.
Yep.
I have a dumb question. Do we have any way of monitoring how often somebody logs in to stream these meetings or to look at them afterwards? We do, okay.
Is that our team, is that information?
Might be interesting to look at that sometime, to see what kind of...
Viewership we're getting.
Right.
Could be the same person just re-watching a meeting.
Me!
I was going to say, the last one's going to be Ingrid.
Right. I did. Sent out the polls yesterday.
This next one, twelve, under B, sort of touched on what Mike was saying just a second ago, actively fosters cooperation with various new, no, it doesn't, news media for the dissemination of information about the school program. You know, that, the world has sort of changed, probably since, when was this policy developed? This question, 2011, not that much difference, but there's definitely less emphasis on paper than there was even seven years ago. But I think when we have the opportunity to get, just like the groundbreaking that happened a couple of weeks ago, to have the press in, we get them.
Other school districts do a much better job than we do. I can, I can tell you that for sure. I'm a local newspaper reader.
Right.
I, I really, and I'm disappointed so many times, I go through and, and I'll see, you know, national award swimmer Joe Jones from Epping or something, or, or just some of the exciting things that we're doing educationally.
But that's a good goal, then, because I, we always talk about bringing the kids back, and, I mean, the swim team did so well this year.
Yeah.
You know, to, to talk about that at the end of the season, we have the athletic...
That gets covered.
Yep.
That gets covered.
But like...
But the, the energy of, you know, bring, I, I, I'm void of the subject right now.
It's part of, you know, it's part of strategic planning and communication strategy and all that stuff.
Some of your neighboring districts contract with a third-party provider for thirty-five-hundred depending or more a year to provide that service on a monthly basis.
I mean, last night at twelve fifteen in the morning, I picked up the Portsmouth Herald in the front page with a story about grading system changes in the Seacoast area.
Right. Right, Portsmouth.
Right down the front page, yep.
Yeah. Go to a seven point or a ten points.
And we used to have a reporter that came to our meetings, and I know we're not, the reporters used to live here during the...
But that was, that was...
That was then.
That was during the, the division.
It was, but it was also, it was also very consistent to see a reporter at the town council meeting that was not at all unusual, even during the, even during the non-emotional time.
It might be worth contacting Exter and saying, hey, we're in your neighborhood.
Well, the editor, the editor lives next to me, so...
Well, so I think that's, I think that both these things are part of the communication strategy moving forward. Ensures a continuous plan, program of public information regarding the schools, another part of that, I think.
I, I get it, I give it a two. For number thirteen.
Yes.
Now, I gave it a four, in that we do have the, the website, we do have this, that I stream it whenever I want to at my convenience, people can, people can watch it as it happens on channel thirteen, and the, the school newsletters, that the town puts a notice out, sign up here for your school newsletter, and have that come out. Now, whether or not people do is a whole other thing, but, but we can probably monitor and see, I mean, you probably have a list of who that all, Jason has a list of who all that goes out to, whether we're getting it beyond just the parents. Does that suffice to go beyond the parents, or do we need to do something else so that the larger community knows it's there?
I do know that it was beefed up, when was that, two years ago, almost now, when we were just sort of getting back into the newsletter stuff, and we had solicited requests. That's how sort of that started from, in the town newsletter. So I think that that did allow us to, to capture some more names, so, but I think it's a, could use growth all the time. Channels all concerns, complaints, and criticisms of the school system through the superintendent for study with the expectation that he/she will report back to the board if action is required.
I gave that a five. I, I have been flipping things up.
I gave it a four, just, I don't have a lot of people who talk to me, but whenever anybody does, I say, okay, here's, here's the email, or I'll get you the email so that you can forward it on to Superintendent Nada.
I give it a four, because I encourage people to come to public comment more than I do to encourage, encourage something from there. Like, come to public comment, that's what it says.
Right, right.
That's what we want to know.
Right. And I do say to folks, come to public comment, but if it's a personal kind of thing where they don't necessarily want to say, oh, my kid, whatever, contact, contact principal if you have him, contact superintendent if you have... Contact, contact principal if you haven't, contact superintendent if you haven't already contacted principal. Same thing I would say to a parent or a student.
I would say for that one about a, a four.
I think we missed fourteen, Ken, the one right before.
Participates actively in community affairs.
I gave it a five. I think the superintendent and most of us are out there.
I believe so. It was funny, a parent said to me, I didn't see you at the, the last, what is it called? No. The Honor Society, the Junior High Honor Society. I said, well, I wasn't invited this year. I tend to, because I remember the, the year before you guys asked me when I was there, and I said, because I got an invitation. And I said to her that we as a group, you know, where our kids are involved or not, try to attend as much as we can. I said, I personally could do better going to sports events, but anything else, I, I try to go to, and I think that we as a team do that. And spread around enough so that we are all visible at a lot of different things, so thank you for that.
I don't grade myself here. I don't, I mean, and I wish I did. I, I keep saying, geez, we should go to the play or we should go. And I, I.
Well, it's community affairs, it's broader than that.
Yeah.
Could you go to the building committee meetings?
No, 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 I know, I know, but okay.
Yeah, so I think, I think collectively we do a good job on that.
I think that's.
All right, respects the superintendent from unjust criticism, protects the superintendent from unjust criticism and efforts of vocal special interest groups. My feeling about that one, well, I'm gonna refrain from.
We don't have those.
We don't have the special interest groups anymore, but I think that, you know, I don't think we have the special interest groups in the same way. I just, you know, we just need to make sure that we are not causing any issues in the community or saying anything that could be perceived as inappropriate. All of us need to be. Seventeen, an individual board member does not commit him or herself to.
Can we spend just a minute?
Mm-hmm.
There's a difference between, in my opinion, there's a, there's a difference between undying support and just like we're doing today, the reality of the things that we do well and the reality of things we don't do well. So if someone would say to me about the superintendent or about me, how are you doing on attending baseball games? I would say, not, not very well. I would like to see. So that's a big difference. I mean, the big difference is each one of us, including the superintendent, has some things that they could be better at. So if a, a butter says to me, Meredith isn't paying attention to me, I, I don't wanna jump in and say, yes, she is. I wanna, I want, I wanna listen to it. So that's the only comment I wanna make. I, I think it's fake if everything, and I, I have great admiration for Meredith, but I think it's fake just to say.
No, I, I guess the, the word that is unjust criticism. That's the part that would, makes it different in my mind. If someone says Kimberly Shelton did not go to the junior, senior high, high school concert at the music hall, yes, I did.
Yeah.
That's an unjust act of criticism. Did I go to the baseball thing? No. So that is a just criticism in my case. So I think that's the subtle difference there. Not, oh, yes, Kimberly Shelton's been to every baseball game because I just know that she has when she hasn't.
I just wanted to say that's.
Anything else about that one?
It's just an interesting question from the past. I think it was more targeted when the jackals were.
Yep.
Running down Main Street on both, or on many different factions, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it speaks to the time that the town was in.
Yep.
An individual board member does not commit him or herself to a position in answer to an inquiry or in public statements unless board policy is already established and clear, or the question addressed to him or her requires merely a recitation of facts about the school system.
Five.
Five.
Because no one represents the board but the board. You represent the board after you speak to us.
Right. But I think that, what I think we have to just be careful of is even if I'm not saying I'm representing the board, if I say certain things, the presumption will be that I'm representing the board or the school or the superintendent or whoever else, and that's just a slippery slope that none of us wanna get involved in.
I've gone over to comfort them several times to.
Right.
For hearings, and I'm always hesitant to speak because I'd have to say, you would all be speaking as a private citizen.
That, that's what I do.
Right.
That's what I always do when I, in my emails and my phone calls, I never represent myself as a school board member.
Right, and I don't either, but I probably hesitate to say things instead of saying things because I'm like, wow, I don't wanna get on that slippery slope.
We are, let's keep going, but I think, I think we might be able to look at these as sort of overall heading type things, if you guys would, let's just finish this one up. Encourages citizen participation in an advisory capacity in the solution of specific problems.
Did you just cut that?
I did, Mike, and I'll do it again. No, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. But, I think that's, I, I put, I put down as a five because I, maybe I'm too narrow of my view, it's just, I, I think the, the building committee again has been an asset, and.
I think the building committee, I think the late start committee, I think the various times that we, even in the building piece when we had the communication team that met to, you know, with community members and things to, to do different things out that team, I think we utilized various citizens very well. And I think that people have greater buy-in when they feel a part of the process in big ways or small ways, or in ways that they're successful to, or qualified. All right, if we look at the next, and I, and I, and I sort of thought we could sort of look at this more quickly, like board meetings.
I, I rated virtually all of those fives because I.
Yeah, as did I.
Same here.
I mean, I think that, you know. We're doing all right. You know, I'm grateful that, you know, we've been able to get the, the agendas done fairly expeditiously. Penny's successfully got them out with the data so that people have time to review stuff before we get here, so that's what I feel about that. Section, so I'm gonna say fives across the board around that, and I think that suffices. Staff and personnel relationships. You know, this is one where you might want to delve in a little more deeply, as this is such a vital part of what we're doing. You know, if we look at the policy piece, I feel, you know, granted, we talk all the time about us needing to really have a focus, and maybe that's a goal too, of, of updating the policies even more than they are and, and really getting them where they need to be. But I think that when it comes to the personnel policies, we have all the necessary legal ones appropriately for the personnel piece of, of our employment.
And I do feel like that policy review is good for our public to understand that there's more than just a slapdash decision made by the five, six of us sitting here, that there are policies that are out there that we function on and they can understand the details of them. So I, I think that that public policy review is really helpful in terms of educating our, our, our community.
It's the worst part of our job because it's, is reading things and understanding them, but at the same time, when we do make a decision, it is based on policy, we have backup. And that's why they're there.
I mean, I'm thinking things like the, the school, driving to school policy for parents to say, wait a minute, there's a policy on that. When you ask as a child that you wanna drive your, drive the car to school, let me.
This has to do, I, I'm sorry, this has to do with personnel policies.
Yeah, but I'm, yeah, this one is personnel policy.
Yeah, it's, it's involving, I was a little bit confused by this question. I, I don't know. It didn't strike me that we wouldn't involve necessarily staff on personnel properties of, well, maybe, I, I, I don't know, I.
I mean, my thought was sexual harassment policies, workplace policies that pertain to personnel are there. Yeah.
I gave, I gave us a two. And I gave us a two over a very specific situation, and that is on personnel policies, we stumbled on, on the ability to complete the non-bargaining unit personnel policies that was brought up months ago. And I would, I think the board should have put more emphasis on getting those personnel policies resolved.
So what are we thinking on that? A three, four? Four?
A three, three's fine with me.
Three and a half. All right. Authorize the employment or dismissal of staff members only upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
Five.
Okay, yes. Makes provisions for complaints of employees to be heard, and after full study, if staff dissatisfaction is found to exist, take action to correct the situation through appropriate administrative channels. I said, not applicable for us because we haven't done it.
But the system is there.
The system is absolutely there.
And I think that's our responsibility to make sure the.
The system is there. And then, and is receptive to suggestions for improvement of the school system? I feel that we are. Encourages professional to grow, growth and increased competency through attendance of staff meetings, training on the jobs, salary increments, which recognize training experience beyond minimum qualification for each position. I think that we do, and I think that, you know, we are all committed to continue looking at that as we move forward, as much as we can. You know, and I think that with the addition of the teacher leaders that have just come on, and, and that whole aspect has given people the opportunity to not only make additional funds, but also utilize skills and, and utilize some of our stronger teachers in the system. Make the staff aware of esteem in which it is held. That was an interesting one, but I think.
I gave myself a three on that one because, you know, any time they're here, I think we, I, and I give them, you know, appropriate recognition. I just, it feels like my gut was that we should do more.
I think we do the best that we can through what we have, and, and I truly believe that they know how much we fight for them. And they watch Al every, every two weeks, talk about what he doesn't know and what he's learned, and how much he appreciates everything, and how he's so glad he's learned all this. And to me, I feel like we do, and whenever I see a teacher, I think of teacher.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that, Elizabeth, it's like the, the small interactions, even in the hallways, walking on the street, just thank you.
Grocery stores.
Yes.
I do it, I mean, I bump into all of them.
Provides a written policy protecting the academic freedom of teachers. I wasn't, I don't know the policy well enough to know about that. I'm assuming that. I assumed that there was, but I wanted to make sure. Give yourself a five, Ken. I'll give myself a four point.
Give myself a question mark.
This one, I think we can talk about, relationship to instructional programming. Obviously, the second piece, we take the personnel that we have to deliver the instruction. Were there any areas, one of the things that I rated myself very low in this section is understanding the instructional program and the general restrictions imposed on by legislature, the state board of education, and the college and university requirements. I mean, I think I know, but I think there is way more than I could know to be remotely educated in this area, and it's why I rely on our educational leader. So I said a one or a two that I, that I needed growth in that area. Any other areas in that section where people felt like either we were soaring or needing some help?
I felt like we always weigh our decisions in terms of what's best for the students.
Yeah. You know, and I think that, again, is one of the things that even when we have our moments of disagreement or different views, we all know that that is ever, on everyone, the foremost on everyone's mind, and I think that that makes it all worthwhile.
It's an interesting one because, you know, I gave us a five because, you know, one of the prime criteria for hiring Meredith was educational excellence.
Yeah.
So if we had not got that in a candidate, we would be not doing it, I think. I mean, you know, it's.
Any other strengths or areas of challenge in that area for anyone?
In terms of the board keeping abreast of new development in course content and teaching techniques through attendance and participation in school board association conferences, the only one I've been to is the new school board training, and if there are others, I have not available myself.
I gave.
Did you get the list, everyone? You can email anyone that talks about them.
From them?
Yeah.
And they just mapped out the next year. I'll send it to you to make sure.
Yeah, maybe that's why I'm not aware of it because of, I mean, I do.
And it's hard, I mean, the majority of us work, we have families, they're difficult to get to.
I gave myself a one in that area because I think there's always something I could learn.
In that case. And after having spent about ten days in education.
Oh, yeah.
All right, the next section, if anyone has anything else on the relationship to instructional programming section, the next section is the fin, relationship to financial management of the school. Were there any specific areas that, that we felt we were strong in, or areas that we needed some improvement in that particular?
Forty-three is a loaded question. There's so much going on, I didn't really know how to answer that.
You know, my sort of thought on that one was, this year we kind, well, I guess we sort of did it with the budget, but not as much. I think the evidence of that was working together to secure the bond the year before, in my, that's how I sort of read that. So I sort of said, this year we haven't done that, but there's evidence from two years ago that we have the ability as a team with the superintendent and the rest of the administrative team and teachers to get that to happen. But I guess every time we have a budget passed, it has an increase. That has happened too, which is every time. To some degree, it may not be as much, but it's some percentage increase, so additional funds are being required and approved.
No extremes there from him.
No, and I, I think that's evidenced also by the annual reviews that come in that say, you know, last year there was a question about a credit card thing that was addressed, and, but usually there's not much there. And then the last section is personal qualities. And I think that any, any specific areas there that we haven't touched on are ones that people would like to touch on again about us as individuals and us as a team.
I gave, I gave high scores for each one of those.
Yeah, I gave four sometimes.
The, the only one I, I, I gave a lower, I mean, it was, I guess a four, is the knowledge of the community which the school system is designed to serve. And by community, I understood the students, the, the various. Yeah, the, the students, and I don't necessarily know that I have a, as good of a, a grasp on what the, what the, especially when it comes to special education, what the, what the, what the needs are, and, and, and what the trends are, and, and that's not to say that we haven't gotten information on that, it's just such a, an involved area, I just don't know. I just don't know, and I, I feel like I don't know enough about it. And that could mean, could mean that I just don't listen, or I, or I, yeah.
No, I think one thing I would like to do, because it has not happened, is maybe have Erica come to a meeting with us one time in the fall, or maybe more, but at least one time, where we sort of just talk about special ed, we'll think, we can think of some topics that we'd like to, or she can just come up with stuff on her own, just so you guys can really interact with her, because I'm not sure many, everyone has to a, to a good degree, but I think that would be helpful to see the person that is leading those efforts. I think that would be good.
And, and I didn't, I just, that was just one example of one community, part of our community, I should say. You know, there are other parts, there are, you know, the, you know, the AP parts, you know, the SST parts.
SST is one of the ones that really has been enlightening for me and for me highly recommending. Everyone would actually, every parent should tour that facility and see what the, the opportunities are for all of our students to have some school-to-work preparation. That place is just incredible.
So, you know, I agree with you, just so when you can see the transportation bill, you understand what they're getting.
Right, right.
And I keep forgetting that our kids don't drop, that they all take buses, which I'm grateful for. And I think you really understand what they, what the opportunities are.
Just even with the extended learning opportunities, the fact that that did not exist when I was in school to that extent, that, that I was at a concert where a student wrote a song that was, that was produced by his, his group as a part of an extended learning opportunity, or the young woman who may not wanna work in a flower shop, but she's learned what a business entails and can take those skills. I mean, you know, when those things happen. I mean, you know, when those things happen, it energizes me to remember why we sit here every two weeks or whatever it is because that's what's most important and those are things that I would not have known. My kids weren't involved in SST or D E L Os. Yes, opportunities.
I looked at the question a little differently with respect to the community. I looked at it with respect to the broader community. I think what we've done with this one community concept is broken down the barriers that used to exist between the school and the town. And however that happened, it used to be said, you know, the school gets everything it wants and the community doesn't get anything. And, well, you know something, guys, we're all together on this thing now and we're going to be having a meeting pretty shortly where if citizens don't like the balance of things or don't like how we're funding, I think we've done a tremendous job breaking that isolation, holding the vote on the same day, holding the deliberative session on the same day, you know. I just, that was my, of course, that's been a lot of my interest in the past, but I think we get an absolute five in terms of associating ourselves with the community.
And I think one of the benefits, again, is that we each have different niche groups within the town of which we are a part and I think that allows us to hear different things and get different perspectives and bring them back to the group and say, this is what is perceived out there. How do we address it? Is it true? Yes, no, move on to the next thing. So I think in that regard, it's been good. Any things that we have not gone over on this that anyone wanted to highlight before we get to the goal setting or the goal concept setting part of our evening?
I would just, I would just add that, you know, and I'll speak for myself, before I sort of took a deeper dive into some of our policies, I know we didn't do this last year at all and.
We did.
We did this?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it.
We did.
Okay.
We never reviewed it, but we were supposed to each do it.
We never did this.
We never did this, but we did this.
Okay.
We didn't do this.
All right. It's just that doing it once a year, is that effective? You know, and and it's it sort of seems like we should sort of have this like, like, you know, in the background when we're doing our, maybe have a, you know, semi-annual check-in.
Because you have the potential.
Because you, well, you can do these things and but we'll never be perfect, but, I mean, these things are only valuable valuable if you you take action.
Right, as I was.
You know.
Yeah, I was doing it like that. It's a good reminder of what my responsibilities are as a member of this board and how the board is, what the expectation is for the function of the board might be useful to do it right after the election if there's a new board member coming on short at a time. And then six months out from then, so.
That's a good idea.
I mean, maybe it could be, we talked about the whole one-meeting workshop, one-meeting business, maybe quarterly, we do a goal review as well as a minimal self-assessment and maybe up to six months, you know, so that's sort of my, so we can see where we are with the goals. Have we completed all our goals in the first quarter? Doubt it, but if we have, do we need to think about framing up some new for the next?
Is there any planning, strategic planning, or two? I mean, that.
I mean, I think, I think overall district goals and strategic plan would be one thing, but I think that our individual goals as a board would would be a separate thing based upon fundamentally what the overall strategic plan is because obviously they should be aligned, but I think it would be a different thing.
I know, I hear in education now that we shouldn't be focusing on the things we don't do well, we should be focused, but this is one area where I think if there's some significant need for improvement, that it's not a bad idea. I mean, I enjoy going through a lot of the self-evaluation, but there's some stuff in here that we ought, I believe we ought to pay particular attention to and make sure we're making some progress. Not that this is anything terrible, but for example, communication, if we don't think we're doing well on that, I think we should.
I think it goes back to the competency-based grading. If the standard is, you know, communication.
Yeah.
Then these are the goals underneath, the standard, the things that must be checked off within communication to say that we are doing that to get to the next thing. I think that's kind of how we have to look at our goals.
That's fine.
It's, I think it's the same thing.
Yeah. So I think somebody needs to say, okay, based on this, there are, the focus should be on these four or five issues that we.
I mean, last year we had four goals, which I forgot to bring, I probably have in my bag, but we did have four. There was a communication goal, there was a technology goal, there was a facilities goal. I don't remember what the fourth one was, but those were the three.
Giving strategic reasons?
I don't know. We might have had a salary goal.
Yeah, because we were negotiating.
Yeah. I can't remember.
Fund a budget.
Fund a budget, thank you. So, communication continues to be an issue. And what we can do is we can, if you guys want to firm out the specific goals tonight, we could do that. We have a little bit of time left to do that. Or we can, you guys can give me some ideas, like happened last year and I sort of firmed up the thoughts into goals and then you guys approve them. It's up to you however you want to have that happen.
Do you have a sense, Kim, of having been the record keeper going through here with the with the four or five areas are that we felt as though?
The the one with the most sort of flexibility was relationship with the superintendent, community relations, which followed with communication again, board meeting was successful. You know, we might want to, another area that was questionable for some people was instructional programming piece. So sort of relationship with superintendent, community relationship, instructional piece. Let me see what else. Financial management work. And I don't know if we should have sort of a a team goal to continue to foster effective communication and teamwork or something, you know, I don't know if that, because that was, it's a strong area, but I think it's one that we don't want to get complacent on because I think that that impacts everything. That's just my sort of thought. So the areas that I sort of come to would be a relationship with superintendent, communication or community relationships, instructional programming, and possibly personal qualities or teamwork. Are there any areas that anyone else?
I think on the strategic plan.
Which I think sort of could fall under the community relations piece. It's a separate piece, but I think I think you're right about that.
And it's also part of the instructional program.
True.
I would quality teamwork, I thought that was one we thought we were pretty good at.
Because I think it's something that, it's, my thought is just, we don't want to get complacent in that, just we don't want to get complacent in other areas. I think that it's important to maintain that, but that just might be me.
Those goals, I mean, sometimes folks, I see this work in in other groups, they overdo it with the goals. They shoot too high. The other thing they do is they don't measure, they don't set measurements for what is success. So how do we know when we've achieved it? Yeah, how do we know when we've achieved this goal? For instance, we've got a goal of of better communication, so what does that mean?
Yep.
Does that mean, you know, X X amount of newsletters, X amount of, you know?
Because the the goal was last year, a monthly newsletter.
And I just use that.
No, but I'm just, I mean, we have to have some sort of measurement because the only way we're ever going to know if we're achieving it or not.
But that's not, but a monthly newsletter is not our goal.
No, I didn't, I didn't need to get off on that tangent. I just.
No, 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 I'm.
Whatever it is we use to measure.
Right.
Success, whether it's whether it's forums or whether it's a survey at the end of the year to the community saying, do you feel like you've had opportunities and to speak and information? You know, what what that, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, that that is, if you have a communications goal, who are you trying to communicate with? The community. And they're the judges of whether or not it it's adequate.
I think it's multi-tier. I think it's community, I think it is superintendent, board, board with each other, board with the staff. I mean, it's a multi-level and there are different goals and objectives within each of those which make it.
It may take us some time for us to land on what those those metrics are to measure success. So we're not, we don't have a vague goal, which we never know if we've hit.
And those metrics are hard to develop. Those are the communication.
Yeah.
You know, so I think we have to sort of.
That's, that's true for any goal we have too.
Right.
That we have some sort of.
But I, I think that one even.
We've succeeded or not.
That one even more specifically because I think that there are different expectations on that. And I think, I don't know that we're ever going to get to the same point in it, but I think that I I don't know how to measure it, you know, to say we've succeeded, we have succeeded in all of that.
In, in, if I can give any, some sort of, add some to it, I mean, I think success insofar as all of the community being up to speed on everything we do is unrealistic. What I think is realistic is that we reasonably provide, I'm just talking about the community, information to folks and opportunities to have input. And, you know, so when we look back on on anything we do during the year, can we say to ourselves that we did that? That that we, you know, gave folks sufficient information in advance to form questions and to contemplate it and sufficient opportunities to to have input? I think, I think by me saying that, I think we've done that well on some occasions. I think, I think we can do it better and make it more, more of a, more of a rhythm so folks know what to expect. You know, they know, I think it's maybe unrealistic to expect folks to hear our message through these meetings.
Oh, yeah.
You know? Even though we, they're all on channel thirteen and 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 this is, I don't want, I'm taking too much.
No, no, we have time, go ahead.
But I mean, we, it sounds like we probably need some more thought as to what the metrics. So my broader point is that whatever our goals are, communication's a tough one to measure, but strategic planning is is an easy one. Either you have it or you don't.
Right.
The plan, so that that we we set those for ourselves.
Yeah.
And then we have check-in points and, you know, goals within goals by, you know, I think we've done that a little with strategic planning because we've already interviewed some folks. That's an increment in that process.
Can't we measure that communication by when you go to an event, A, the attendance, and B, the understanding that these people have on why they're attending?
It, that, I think, my feeling is that you can, we can put an ad out on CNN and other networks and 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 then all the papers and 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 on a blimp around town and people still may not show up. It's a, it's a matter of degree of reasonableness, it just, just that we're consistently providing the information. Doesn't mean people are going to read it. I think one of the, one of the, I think it was a first gentleman who came to us about the strategic plan, I forget his name, ends with an L, but in any event, he said, look, it's not about them actually understanding and reading, it's providing, you providing it to them. You can't do any more than that. You can't make them read it, you can't make them comment on it. So just that we're making sure we're doing that.
Because I think it's hard. I feel like some of the most effective communication I've had have been kind of chance conversations with individuals or small groups where somebody didn't understand something about the school and was able to, when they were comfortable, have that conversation with them, that information is, and out there we've provided it, but for whatever reason, they didn't either absorb it or access it, whatever. And and those are hard to track. Each of us does that in our own sphere and when those opportunities arise.
And I'll be, I'll be clear about what I'm getting at with this because I keep the end in mind on this is 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 support for education, which you need in budgets and you need, you know, just in the community. And in order to have that, people need to feel that they, that they're part of it. And that takes, takes a lot of work. I mean, it took a lot of work with the, you know, with the bond process. I mean, we had innumerable meetings, even with small groups of folks, and I don't know if that's sustainable on a, on an ongoing basis, you know, I mean, you know, we'll all go gray if we do that level of intensity, but it takes some of that to keep folks involved, you know.
I got something buzzing around in my head, let me just try it. If the, if the board were to publish board news twice a year, and I forget the twice a year or whatever, but the responsibility of the board to publish board news on a periodic basis. And in that board news, we were to say, these are the things that the board is focusing on right now.
Both points, so.
Yep, just competency-based education, we're trying to learn about it. Facility stuff, changes perhaps that are affecting how the board acts through legislative issues. Just a dump of an eight by ten page that says, these are the six things the board's focusing on for the past six months and will focus on. We could then say, at least we are accumulating the information, we're distributing the information, and we can measure ourselves as to whether we're doing that effectively or not.
So I had a, I think a slight epiphany as you were talking about that. We're five people, we can't do all this, but there are folks I'm sure that are willing to spread the word and to keep abreast of things. And I think we should leverage those folks. And this goes back to one of the things of having community involved in 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 efforts, you know, that that involve the schools, that we set up a process. We don't, we're not the ones always attending forums or whatever, but we set up a process with other folks, you know? And I hate to use the word committee because it's, you know what I'm saying? But but to to help and keep consistently the information out there because we simply can't do it, we can guide it, but we simply can't do it all ourselves.
And we had that once and it actually really brought everybody out to understand if you see people running around with lables on the back of their cars. I mean, that whole thing was grassroots by three parents who were trying to get information out. And unfortunately, it got twisted and turned. I would love to have that started again because it it did get information out.
That was, yes.
And we have to make sure that it's, you know, it is somebody's personal view going out there, but it can be nonjudgmental.
That was definitely partisan, but effective in terms of the outreach.
Yep.
You know, and there's just no way we can, we simply don't have the hours in the day to do that ourselves.
You notice I'm wearing my red shirt tonight, red ed.
Yeah.
Keep calm, I mean, it's a, it's a national, be aware of education and vote for education. And a shirt that says, keep calm and vote on education is in the liberty clause, otherwise it would have worn.
The, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to my original thought here for just a minute if you revisit it with me. December board meeting notes. Wait, oh, let's, I'm gonna change it to Sept. Board considering a budget for next fiscal year. We're in the budgeting process. Looking at, and I don't want to editorialize, but evaluating increase in state aid, decrease in enrollment or whatever.
In retirement.
In retirement. So that's, that's an issue the board is dealing with. So if I were to get that and I were to have an opinion about that, maybe I'd get, I'd get involved.
No, isn't that something that we are already putting up with our notice of meetings and the agenda? That that information is there for those people who are willing to.
It is there.
Access it. And are we like in this political cycle I've got in the paper, I have so many of those candidates, thirteen candidates who are running for Kershaw Board's position. It's happening to me every day, I'm just doing a swipe, delete, swipe, delete, swipe, delete, delete. And if we're getting it out in a format that is accessible to people now, do we want to duplicate it?
Great question. There are, these are, these are good ideas and there are innumerable ways to pick in communication. I think what we need to ask ourselves is why, why are we doing it? Why? What's the point?
For communication.
But for why? Why?
Support from the community to do good things for the community based on knowledge.
To afford.
So the reason, the reason we're building a new facility is because. So the reason, the reason we're building a new facility is because the other one was not safe. Um, it was not instructionally, so I, that's, so that when they go to vote, they have good information. I think that's my answer.
And I think it's, you know, support, but also questions that might arise as a result of what they're reading. Um, I know that when I first came on the board, I wrote that newsletter thing that went out a few times.
Yeah.
Um, that sort of took place for the superintendent newsletter that wasn't going on at that time. So I think that, you know, it might make sense for us to, and there was, with that, I would solicit feedback from Mike on the facilities front. We mentioned the top ten. We did a variety of different things, just to get people's names out there. I mean, I think that, you know, twice a year, if that is what we decide, or whatever it is, if we all work together as a five-person team and, and chip away at it, um, that might be something that we could achieve and accomplish. Um, and it might be redundant stuff that's in the agenda, that's in Meredith's newsletter. It may be the exact same thing, worded a little differently, but it might take that third time for me as a voter to say, oh, now I understand what they're talking about. Or this is why this makes sense. Or I have a question about this. Let me go to this next be, meeting and talk in public comment about the question that I have about it. So I think that, you know.
It may be helpful to solicit feedback from the community of what would be, what they think they may be missing, what would be helpful to them, what medium. You know?
I know one of the discussions, I know that when you and the world had it, was doing something with, um, our larger community about technology and, and, and helping folks with their technology. And I was thinking, as I listened to the last meeting, that one of the things that our larger community, especially older folks who were not in school when technology was added, was to do some kind of explanation of our one-on-one. We use them as textbooks. We use them as writing tools. We use them for research, the way we used to use a card catalog, so that parents understa- that, not parents, the parents who are beyond the parents of kids who are in school, see how we're using that technology and have a time to say, oh, yeah, golly, when I was in school, I had to go to the library to get the encyclopedia. Now I can, I can Google it. Or, oh, handwriting's awful. Nice to be able to, to key it in and not have those clunky old manual typewriters that I see they're now doing tech, they're doing tech ones that you can plug into yours, your computer, so they plonk, 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 the way those do. But do something like that where it's a, uh, something specific to that, or all those sessions that we had on competency-based learning. We can go up to the Savior Citizen Center. We can, uh, go to various forums within the community, too.
I mean, and I think, you know, we're in a community, we're fortunate enough to have a community where people wanna be involved and participate and have knowledge of stuff. I think that's a benefit that we have. And so I think it's important of, for us on all levels, um, to provide people with a, a array of information, so that they can make the best decisions that they can. Um, or have the most information. If I have a fifth graders coming in sixth grade, what does that look like? What does a block schedule look? Those things, those are beyond us. But those are, I think, in my mind, that's part of our communication strategic plan, too. You know, not just what we're gonna do as a board, but what all, but also we're, we're encouraging the district to do.
Well, one that, ah, I picked up some things at the convention on the USDA, the, the nutrition program, to do a whole session on how do we implement our nutrition program, our breakfast program, our lunch program, uh, all that support within our program, but also the sixty-eight hours of hunger, hunger program, and how, how does that affect our larger community?
Cause we do have a lot of things in this community, I think, that are exciting. You know, one-to-one is exciting. Things that towns of our size don't often get to do. And I think it's not bad for us to toot our horn collectively, to say, this is what we're doing for these kids. Each kid has the opportunity of having a laptop to take home, which they could have at the end of their high school career. That is an amazing thing that's happening, that unless you're in the school, maybe you don't know that. So that, I, I think we're all on the same page with that. So if we look at this, communication, strategic plan, accessing instructional stuff, for lack of the stuff, is not a word in that, but it works. What else? What other, that's three sort of target areas.
Three, cause the strategic plans, it's gonna take time.
That's a big ball of wax.
Big ball of wax.
That's a big ball of wax.
A ball of wax.
Yeah, that's a big ball of wax. And I think, you know, I think as important, because that dictates what goes on in the buildings that we're building. Um, you know, it's still amazing to me that things are actually happening at these schools. I'm shocked every time I drive by. I need to get over that, but I do every time. Get shocked about that. But anyway, that just makes.
I went home, I went out on thirty-three this morning, came back on one oh eight. I'm like, woo! And I drove back up the street.
So I actually had my friend come visit, who hadn't been here in five years, who was one of the people that helped, you know, get this thing rolling. And not even thinking, cause I drive by it every day, she said, oh, my God, it's really happening. And she started crying. She's like, you guys really, really did it.
I, I used a different thing, but I can't repeat.
No.
And more of a, more of the, oh, no, it's happening. You know, turning back now.
No.
It's exciting that I, I get to see it through somebody's eyes. Like, oh, you're right.
It's happening.
Kim, I had a more of a process thing, but I think it's, it's equally important to achievement of any goal. And I, and I kinda got on it at the last, um, at the, at the retreat, was calendaring stuff, planning out meetings, meet, you know, speci- with specific meetings towards our goals, or things can slide.
I agree. And I think that that, that should be a collective goal for us. I think that, Mike, goes along with sort of my team-building concept, too, in terms of keeping us on track, keeping us accountable collectively and individually to get the goals moving forward.
It's not exciting, but it's hard work, and it's definitely necessary.
And people can see the hard work that's going into it. So me and Howie happens to do here, because all you do is just policies all the time. Just like, wish that's all we did. Um, I think that's, that would be a workshop thing, like the beginning of our workshop. What, what are our goals? Boom, boom, boom. What have we done this month? To achieve, to work toward the goal.
And so that, to get back to, and I think this helps us with everything that's in this. It, it was, it was why I just asked L all those why questions. I was trying to get it down to its base level. What are we after? What are we trying to do? We're not communicating for the sake of communicating. There's, there's a reason behind it. And I would, you know, um, and, and that's, you know, to serve our students as, as best as we can. I think, you know, that, that, we have to keep that all in mind, uh, you know, in everything we do. And, and make sure that we're not spinning our wheels in the wrong direction, you know, either personally or substantively, um, on stuff. And, and, and maybe that's a habit we should ask ourselves. You know, every time we're talking about something, how is this, how's this getting us there? You know? Sounds, sounds kinda self-evident, but I think we get off track, but it's hard.
I think it's good.
Why organizations do strategic plans, force them into that? Why and how are we getting them more?
If, if at this time next year, just take based on those last three comments, or the last three subjects, if at this time next year, we had a strategic plan developed that's measurable, accountable. If next year at this time, we had a calendar of events for the next year, that's, we can visualize it, we can say we did or we didn't do it. If we had a board meeting communication sent out to, I would argue, all residents, not just school moms and so forth, that would be something that we could measure as to whether we've, we've done something or not. So as, I think, that one's, I, the other one's, I can't tie together yet, the relationship to the superintendent and the instructional review, but.
I will, um, if it's okay, I'll sort of start doing stuff and shoot them out. You guys can shoot back what you think, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting and firm a law.
But those, at least from my standpoint, say, okay, it, a year from now, I'll know whether I did it or I didn't do it. Put out the calendar, I did. I did a strategic plan or I didn't. I put out communication and here it is, or I didn't. I think that would be a huge accomplishment.
Well, as I'm inclined to say, the calendar is just paper. It's the work that's done through it. That's the important thing. And the calendar's a tool that I use, but that doesn't necessarily help the community. It's, it's a graph, the kindergarten, or the preschool teacher in me says, yes, even preschool teachers use graphic organizers. We do the calendar every day at school. We may start with the seven days instead of the thirty-one, the twenty-eight to thirty-one days, but a graphic organizer, a calendar is a graphic organizer. And that's what it is. What happens inside is what's important.
Absolutely right. And, and you, within that calendar, it says, on January twentieth, I'm gonna have completed X, Y, and Z. I totally agree with it. But it should be an outline of what we gotta get done by when. We've gotta get the budget done by this. We've gotta get forecast done by this. We've gotta.
It's not the calendar, it's the plan.
It's, yeah. I used the wrong term.
The execution.
I used the wrong term.
Yeah. But, but, um, I don't think, we really didn't do that last year. So what, so we never, so we never got to goals, right? Really? I mean, we never got to checking on our goals.
Never got to budgets.
No, we did check on the goals. Our goals, we did.
There's a whole, there's a whole list of things that we really didn't do. So.
Budgets is a good.
And it's not, not to be critical, but it just, it's, it's room for, it's room for improvement. And calendars as such are a piece of paper. It's, when I said the hard work, the hard work goes into thinking about it and planning it out, so you can set realistic goals that you can meet. And, and, and it, it, it's a basis to keep yourself in line.
Any other thoughts in our last five minutes?
Sometimes goals, people talk about stretch goals. My, my instinct here is just keep hitting singles. Don't hit all months.
I mean, I, my hope.
Especially with this, I, I, you know, we're opening up an old building right now. And.
That's a stretch goal.
Well, and, and, and I'm telling you what, I mean, I think, and this isn't to strike fear. We knew this going in. The town knew it going in, that, you know, we were, we've sort of been in the harbor up till now. When you start doing that, you just don't know all the things that may arise. And so it's, it's an incredibly time-intensive thing for, for Meredith, for Greg, for others. And so when I say hit singles, don't bite off more than you can chew. And, and, you know, us as a school board and whatnot, and focus on the fundamentals until you get through, though, that would, 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 maybe we'll get lucky. And maybe, maybe it'll be smooth sailing, but that's not typically the experience with these things. So I think that's why I say we have to hit singles and not load, and I say us, I mean, and I'm extending it to Meredith and Greg and others that, you know, if, if six months from now, it's going swimmingly, and we have extra time, well, maybe we can focus on something else. But I.
It's not gonna.
Yeah. So, so that, that's good leadership. That's just not overdoing it. And, and, and it's pick, it's picking, picking two or three things that we can do under this circumstance.
Yep. You know, well, it, it's, it's a tight rope, because we have to do that, but then we also have to do what's going on in those buildings every day. It's, it's a tight rope situation, because the educational instructional stuff has to continue regardless of what foibles come with it.
I, I don't envy Meredith. I don't envy Greg's, um, being on the other end of their phone right now, or when, when kids come back and we're talking about phasing and parents are calling and this and that. It's, 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 it's gonna be, it's gonna, we're gonna have to circle the wagons. And we're gonna, we're gonna have to, you know.
That's why we should, at, at the end of every meeting, we should remind everyone, there will be no parking at the school in September.
There, there are so many of these things that are cropping up, and, um, I shouldn't say so many things, so many things that we won't see that will crop up, you know, that just, and, and you just gotta leave, have this lead capacity to be able to deal with that.
You know, I think it goes back to something that I've said, under other circumstances, you know, in all areas, us working together, us working with Meredith and Greg, us with the community with us, believing that everyone is doing the absolute best that they can in the situation, regardless of what their role is during the process, and giving the benefit of the doubt. You know, it might take a little bit of time to communicate back because another fire is happening, or something instructionally is happening. Um, I think we need to have that sort of in our mindset, that everyone is doing the best at shooting on every cylinder that they possibly can to get this done as quickly and as, as effectively in all areas, cost and otherwise, within the schedule.
And we need to set expectations, too, I think, not only amongst ourselves, but in, in the community, that, look, this is a project that, it's an old building. And, and we've done some of that already, but you need to be reminded that there are things will come up. We've done our very, very best to put in contingencies and, and plan and all that. We'll continue to do so, but you need to, to bear with us a little bit. So.
Yeah, I think. All right. Thank you, guys, for this time. We will adjourn this part of our workshop at seven twenty-five and reconvene within the next five or so minutes for our business meeting.
Here?
Yes, right here. Thank you.